In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, which is posted on the east wall of this meeting room. Tonight's agenda is posted in three public locations: the Eagle Municipal Building, Eagle Fire and Rescue, and Eagle Municipal Park. The village board will now stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. And those in the audience that would like to participate, please enjoy us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, a nation under one individual liberty and justice.
As a reminder to the public, if you wish to speak on an agenda item tonight, you must raise your hand and be recognized by the chair. Upon being recognized, please state your name and address. On all agenda items, except for open forum, each member of the public wishing to speak on a topic will be allowed to speak one time each for a period of up to three minutes. Speakers should direct comments to the board, not the audience. And speakers shall not disrupt the proceedings of the public body nor speak out of turn. That will bring us to item number one, report from Fire and Rescue.
Aaron, Eagle Fire Lieutenant, your name about 106 calls. For the month of July, we've had 13, seven rescue calls, three fires, two car accidents, and one half an hour call. We're still averaging around 10 responders per call. And we average right around an hour per call. So we've got about 100 hours that the department spent on on season here. Other than that, what do you got?
Yeah, we did combine training this last month with fire. So that was pretty neat. We worked on our rescue systems. And then this Wednesday, we have our department meeting, which we were planning on doing 30 minutes before. So like 6:00 to 6:30 coming and having time available for people to go in to get blood pressure checks for a break. We made this in the day. We'll post something. But yeah, just something that we wanted to try out and see how that would go. Maybe do something good, we need to help out a little bit.
Does anybody have any questions for them? All right, thank you. That takes us to item number two, Consider Proposals for Architectural Services for a new fire and rescue facility. Luke, do you want to talk first?
Yes, so you guys have all that paperwork for from, I sent two, I think, companies in. The one was Gens Design. They were $170,000 without surveying. So they would have been questioning $200,000. Nothing against Gens Design, but they're a good company, but they're more of a, okay, explain. Flashy companies, you're working order building, you're you're stuff like that. So ADA, they, the ones that like the proposal you guys have in front, they are a company that's doing friends, volunteer fire department right now. They create, they got two more that they've been working on similar sized towns that this building of Eagle is, about the same size of buildings, a little bit different. So and that's one of the reasons why they're considered reworked, you know, is they have a lot of this stuff already from the, or from other buildings. So a lot of the cleanup work is done. So I think the price was $87,000 on there, which is actually really, really cheap. So that money was actually coming out of the bond when this thing would pass. The rural has money sitting there to actually pay for it until the bond passes. On that, once we decide to go, yeah, I guess if there's anything else you guys have questions of, anything that's covered mechanical, all that, M and P's, all that stuff, civil.
So as a precursor to that, just for discussion sake, at this point in time, we had a meeting, two of your board, village staff, a couple folks from the rural fire district. We had a meeting on Thursday evening, afternoon, late afternoon last week to generally go over an interlocal agreement that the rural's attorney put a skeleton together for us. And basically, the idea would be that the village and the rural would enter into a new interlocal agreement. That interlocal agreement would include the construction phase of the new building, everything from the construction phase of the new building all the way through to the operations of the building after it's built, probably for 20 years at least, depending on how long that bond is out. We haven't determined exactly when the bond would start, but my understanding is we're looking at about 20 years.
Yes, we will be under 20 years, 20 to 21. That's what we're looking at right now. So the way this has all worked out is the goal would be to start construction and that would work in March of next year. I'd like to, we're kind of in a holding spot right now. We're getting to a point of I need to get the prints out, get prints made, get them bid out so I can actually box the prices and for sure that we're going to do this. And then when we bid this out, it will be a spring start and then it'd be open, I would say, it'd be about a six-month build, global certification.
So in order to get this this started, we decided to put on the agenda the at least hiring the architect at this point in time. The village won't have any money that they need to pay out during this fiscal year, which we're nearing the end of course. As he indicated, depending on which bid you take, the rural has enough money that they they confront the money out of whatever they have available right now, but it would ultimately come out of the bond money. This, these are the rough, the rough bullet points for this agreement that I want your board to think about right now. We are not going to vote necessarily on the agreement tonight. We need to get it completely fleshed out in front of all of you, in front of the rural fire boards, so they can have it at their meeting to agree to it. Generally speaking, this is kind of what we're thinking of. Right now, the land that this would be on is owned by the Eagle Grounds and Facilities Group. It is the nonprofit corporation that owns the building that we have the village hall in and and the maintenance shed. We have a USDA loan on that that's underway. We've talked to USDA, as I think I reported at the last meeting. We would probably need to survey that lot so we could divide it so that the fire station would be on one part of the lot. The, our other building would be retained under the USDA loan. Our suggestion is, and I've talked to the legal for the rural, that we have that entity, that nonprofit, continue to hold the land that the fire station is built on and do a triple net lease like we have with the Village of Eagle. So during the term of the bond, it would be owned by that entity. The the two village and rural would pay for all the expenses for it, but it would be owned by that until the bond is retired, at which point we would have an option for the entities to buy it out of Eagle Facilities and Grounds. For the the bond itself, the proposal is that Rural Fire would take out the bond under their bond authority. The village would contribute one-third to the bond payment. Rural would contribute two-thirds during the life of the bond. The village with village's additional contribution, since they're only paying one-third of that cost, is they're going to contribute the land because the village has the right to buy that land at the end of the triple net lease right now that we have with, so we're contributing our interest, that one, to get up to a half interest in the building itself ultimately. Those payments would go probably twice a year on the bond. The way they've got it set up, that's how they've been working on a fire truck bond that they have right now. One payment might be interest only, and the other one would would pay down principal. But we haven't worked that detail out, but that's probably how you would look at that happening. Once we get there, we are also going to have, both boards will approve any of the drawings, any of the plans. They would probably have to have it on each of their meeting agendas. We could have a joint meeting to approve that as well if we get, when we get to that point. Anytime we have any sort of construction decision, large construction decision like that, that would be both boards deciding. During the construction then, once we get to, and we'll have to do public bidding on this project. It will be up for public bid. Both boards would have to award that public bid ultimately. So it's not going to be one or the other. You both point out kind of the other to approve the bid. Once we get into the construction phase, the proposal right now is that for construction, the rural would have a representative that would act as the project administrator. Both parties would approve the design. Both parties will approve any major change orders above $5,000. There would be regular financial reports, updates given by that project administrator to both boards regularly. There is a proposal that if we had change orders under $5,000, the project rep or administrator would have some discretion on making those changes. Luke did tell us over and over again that there will be no change orders on this project. That would be great. We all know that can change, but that's kind of the proposal right now. Again, this is in the really loose discussion we have. There's also a section of the agreement as to an option to purchase one from the other. It may be in 20 years, we have a bigger facility that needs to be made. One of the entities may want to buy the other one out. Or we may want to sell the facility to a third party, at which point we would each have 50% equity in the property at that point in time. After the project is completely built out, then it would be turned over to operations for the next 20 years, nineteen and a half years. During that operations, the suggestion is that the village would have, the village would be the administrator for the the operations. In other words, the village would have a representative, probably the clerk, would take care of paying all the bills for the facility, the utilities, et cetera. But that those expenses would be split generally 50-50 between the entities with a quarterly request to reimburse from the rural board. They need at least quarterly, and so that would be part of the contract to do that. We did have some discussion about, and as we know with any of these buildings as they age, there are things that you need to update to have a committee of two members of the rural, two members of the village board to be on a facilities committee to look at things like that. They need to be updated and come back to each of their boards. The other thing that we've discussed is maybe taking a look at our insurances that we have. Right now, my understanding is the rural pays for the fire truck insurance. They have a fire package insurance where they're paying for some disability insurance and some other coverages, liability coverages, operations. The village pays for the rescue, the rescue equipment insurance, of course. We also pay workers comp for all of the rosters. We pay life insurance, the statutory life insurance coverage that's required for both of the rosters as well. And I think we pay 100% of the structure because the structure is now owned by the Village of Eagle. The proposal would be that both entities would pay for the structural insurance, which share that as part of the share cost for the new structure. And then we're going to get some quotes and talk to Petersons to see where we are on the insurances, to see if we have any overlaps right there. We may have some overlapping coverage. So to to kind of fine tune that and get back together at the interlocal to figure out what's the best way to approach that. Workers comp insurance has gotten to be a major premium. 20 years ago, we didn't see much of a premium. Today, we do. So those are the kinds of things we want to look at in more time before we enter into an interlocal. So that's basically what we went through the other night. What my goal is, is to, after you guys tell me what you want to do, get together with their attorney and try to fine tune an agreement that we can give to all of you to look at for discussion, maybe at the next meeting. And then you guys can look at it and see, is this really what we want to enter into? Because we do want to get, get an agreement, probably enter into without this, at a minimum. So that's basically where we got it. But tonight, I think the the action item that they're asking for is to allow them to enter in, to choose one of the architectural drawings to decide they're going to go forward.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's what we're in, is to choose that. You get that one, I guess, because my hands get like that all the time. I can't give you more prices. I can't give you a, and feel like it's something takes them. I would say he here, he'd be, he'd probably have a friend and threaten me and bring that up. Which is moving through the facts. And he's got some ideas, you know what I mean? Except they don't, so it's a little number easy to tell. That my goal would be in the next two months, that thing is completely done, finalized, signed off by the boards, and that board's sending that thing out there. That's what we're going to do. But I can't, you know what I mean? The rural already said, okay, yeah, let's go, let's go bring ADA. We passed that in our last meeting, pending on when you guys vote. That's all we're going to do. And I know I would do the straight line a little bit. Maureen slowed me down, which is perfect because we had to get some legal stuff really separated to have this all work. So I appreciate your time on it, just to make it fair for the village and fair for the rural. Because at the end of the day, we're trying to do this 50-50, have great work to do for the next 50 years on this. So that's what we're looking at. So that's kind of where I'm at on this, is if you guys could say yay or nay or pushing forward with these prints. And then the next thing would be entering the rural for the building. And here we go. And tonight, that's kind of what I'm asking you. I guess, do you guys have any questions for me?
I got one, just of the first part. It says it's a single-story structure. I know most of it's going to be single-story, but the drawings that you had last time, that back part's supposed to be two.
He's not changing them. He's fine with that. That was, that was the proposal limit, and we threw that in. It was supposed to be storage space above, and the building was going to be much taller. What we did was shrink the building down, the wall heights down, and extend that second story up through. That's the reason why I said that. If that makes any sense. We're going to go with 24-foot walls so we can get that. Well, now we're shrinking the building down height-wise because we don't need all that overhead. We don't need to release the heat, you know, video and me. I'm trying to control wall heights, and then that's why we sent that second story up. So that's not.
And finally, look at this. It says May 20 or the 2025 is when the agreement was entered. Did he have a limitation on that?
He's good. He's good. I had a conversation with him today, and we can go back to work. Because I didn't know until we got all the things signed. And he was like, no, you're good, you're good with me, and put it in the side. That's what we're.
Do they have any other questions? I would like to make a motion that we approve the ADA Architectural Firm for the new fire and rescue facility.
I'll second.
Do they have any more questions to question?
$87,600.
Voting on the motion second to approve Architectural Design Associates ADA's proposal to for architectural services for a new fire and rescue facility in the $87,600. Voting, James?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
There's Gary. Thank you very much. Do you need this hard copy or you got?
I got a hard copy of it. I'll probably have, once we get to the point, I'll have probably you sign it.
I think we're ready, I think we're ready for you guys signing.
Okay, okay.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Yes, no, thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. All right, that takes aside number three, approval, approve Eagle and Fire and Rescue Pool Party on August 2nd, 2025. Any questions, discussion?
Something we're gonna move on past, fire and rescue.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Eagle Fire and Rescue Pool Party on August 2nd, 2025.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Voting on the motion second to approve Eagle Fire and Rescue Pool Party on August 2nd, 2025. Voting on that, John?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Motion, Gary?
Takes aside number four, set the closing date of August 10th, 2025 for the Eagle Pool for the 2025 season. Seems pretty realistic.
Yeah, I talked to the manager. They're going to start going back to college and high school that week. So she thought it'd be best that that's maybe the final day.
A motion to approve, set the date, August 10th.
I'll second.
Do you want a discussion?
That being listed to public or not, it has an extra item to be added.
Item five is just for strictly the employees.
I understand. Public, that's why I say we.
Yeah, for the, yeah, closing for the pub, closing to the public for August 10th.
I'm thinking of going ahead and defuse anybody being confused by this.
Thank you. Voting, yeah, voting on the motion second to set the public closing date of August 10th, 2025, the Eagle Pool, for the season. Voting, Dan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Motion, Gary?
That takes aside number five, approve Eagle Life Garden Pool Party on August 11th, 2025. Do they have any questions?
A motion for the private pool party on the 11th.
I'll second it. Any more questions? All right, Nick?
Voting on the motion second to approve the Eagle Life Garden Pool Party on August 11th, 2025. Marcus?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Motion, Gary?
All right, that takes aside number six, open forum. Open forum is for discussion regarding items not found on the agenda and that do not require the spending of taxpayer dollars. Is there anybody present that would like to speak during open forum?
I got something. So I have a changing of careers, so I will be eventually resigning. I will not be here the next meeting. Possibly I'll be here the next two meetings after that, for sure, one more. And you'll likely see a letter of resignation in that meantime.
Do you guys have anything for the open forum?
I don't know. All right, you know, me and Robert Sorensen, the Kaskan Sheriff, I just came out here to say hi. Couldn't be with you, couldn't be with you tonight, but we have a new, oh, a new captain of our patrol investigation division. His name is Reed Richter, been a long enforcement for a while, but I have. Lieutenant Burke retired here in, or ten, or fourteen of April. He had 37, 38 years with the Kaskan Sheriff Office. But he recently retired. Finalized a process in June, and so we are able to move to administrator. So Captain Richter will be able to run the control. And hopefully here in a month or so, or a couple of meetings, I'll get him out here. Yep, the next thing, you know, essentially, if you have any questions, I haven't been here for several months, and if you have any questions related to the Sheriff's office, I can try to answer, if not, if you can answer. And then the last thing, so back in '24, when I was here opening meetings, I discussed a little bit on our former civil prosecutor who created a community of lights and ordinance. Kind of like dead in the water, just very important things to tackle and take care of. Here about two weeks ago, the Kaskan Commissioners put together a committee for, for approval of the committee for the said ordinance. So we had our first meeting this last week, and basically, we're, the goal is we're going to meet here for the next two, three months before we make some proposals and put that before the Kaskan Commissioners. But basically, what the Commissioners are looking at, the countywide ordinance, that will compass all the roads that currently aren't under a municipality ordinance. that currently aren't under a municipality ordinance or UTVs. Um, for the most part, you know, they're gonna be almost identical, just because you gotta follow the state law. And you can't make it less restrictive, you can just make it more restrictive. Um, it'll essentially be a countywide ordinance, and of course, you know, the way it'll be presented is for all, um, UTVs, ATVs, and all parts, but at the end of the day, you know, we don't create the law, the Commissioners create that ordinance, so it'll choose and decide, you know, what exactly that will entail. Um, but that's what we meet the potatoes of it, you know, with the state law. And of course, we make recommendations, you know, whether it's a, uh, you know, a sticker, a flag, or a flag. And of course, you know, being in office and growing up in the county, you know, I like, I like your guys, the way you guys operate. And the garden flag on the UTV with a hero on it, you know, it's kind of my favorite. Um, it's no matter what direction you're coming from, no matter what direction they're coming from, you can identify, you know, identify the UTV. Uh, but yeah, it's got to have something new that will come in, you know, through the Commissioners here in several months before the year ends.
So it really wouldn't affect anybody in Eagle, if you're driving in Eagle, it would just be if you left Eagle?
That is correct, so if you have one of those, you know, if passing ordinance for all three, and you have one of them, and you strictly just drive in the ability to Eagle, you do not have to register with the county. But if you wanna go choose to drive on county roads outside of the ability to Eagle, then you will have to register it at the Kastanah Sheriff's Office. So, that's all I know.
Thank you very much.
I have one thing for you. Could you, uh, pop with your officers on our, we have an ordinance against soliciting your town to adopt a unit? I've got a few issues here.
Oddly, I don't know why.
If they see enough, you know, encourage them to stop them and ask them if they got it made, no. They don't, but they'll tell you they do, they wear a petition. And they basically lied to the sheriff, sheriff stopped them. Said, oh, I'm on my way, well, it's Wednesday. Stop saying, oh, it's a little bit, basically lied, just one of those things about what we're doing, and got to begin the next day, still do the same thing.
Um, so on that topic, I remember a couple emails coming through about that, I believe.
Tiffany?
Um, but so remind me about that, so is every, when you give a permit, is all the helpers of that company or whomever they need to sometimes, or find them, you know? Do they each get a copy?
They have to each get a permit.
Do they each get a permit, first, you know, for the same company?
Yeah.
So every, so everyone that soliciting will have.
Your own copy of that.
Any copy of your head.
I believe currently, nobody has one right now. They like to be S, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, currently, no, there's none, so if they say they have it, they're lying. There is no permits out right now.
And it's cheap, I don't know why they.
Right.
Yeah. So on that topic, um, for example, Louisville, anytime, you know, they, they get one, it's confirmed and good or valid, like there goes, or automatically sends us the copy of it, so then all the road patrol has that copy.
We could do that.
Which it has like, I think theirs has the date of the issue, maybe like an expiration date or something. Can you guys possibly do that?
Yeah.
Do you post those, please, to the, for the each ones?
Yeah, sure, no, I'm pretty good, uh, we've seen our communities do that. Those people know, we put one out because we were kind of complaints this last quarter. We put something out there to say, hey, do we have a permit? Question that, but yeah, it'd be easy enough. We don't get a whole lot, to do it legitimately at least.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
All right, that takes us to item number seven. Consider estimate from Nebraska Curb and Bents LLC on behalf of Eagle Rec.
Algo Eagle Rec.
Algo Eagle Rec for updates to the Eagle Municipal Park Ball Field in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred fifty dollars. You wanna say something, Becky?
Uh, I mean, I can kind of go over this, I don't know if you guys have questions or anything, but I did have the guy kind of do a picture for us. Um, there's a couple things I did want to note in the picture. It's more, we will be leaving this portion open. I know that there was some discussion on that previously, so it's only gonna be fenced in, you know, this portion.
So you're not gonna put a gate or anything, you're just gonna leave it open?
We're just gonna leave it open.
It looks like it's still extended farther than it is right now. How much farther is it gonna be extended?
So the reason that it, okay, so it is extended, you're right, it's extended a little bit further, and that's because, one, we had to move the dugouts down, because if they're gonna be taller and covered, you can't sit behind there and watch the games. Um, so that's kind of why they're extended out. Where the door is right now to go in and out of the dugout, that's gonna be the door still to go in and out.
It gets swapped to the other side.
Yes, on the other side. Um, so it will go a little bit further down, um, but it won't be like too much, hopefully. Um, and then, oh, and then the other thing I wanted to note is being, uh, this sidewalk that was put in, I thought it would've just been put in a little bit further out. Um, there, we could've had two hundred feet. Um, unfortunately, we're about, I don't know, maybe a foot or so. So what I did do is, um, you can see how they're kind of angled out, and this is for just in case, this is not something we're going, we're not planning on doing this right now, but in case we ever need to move the backstop back, we can, and it won't be, um, as much money to do that, because the feds will already be prepared for that. And the reason being is if we ever needed, um, this field to be able to play more age groups, if you had it at two hundred feet, then all of softball could play there, as well as eight-year and ten-year baseball. So it would just be twelve-year, unfortunately, it would be the only two that would have to play on a bigger field. So, um, that's kind of why we did that as well. Um, trying to think if there's any other things, any other.
I appreciate you le- leaving the fence out of that area, but does that still reach your age?
It will, um, I've been looking, I actually talked to some of the people in Wauhui, they had like a fence that they put up and throw down. So I don't know, maybe I'll look into something like that. I just didn't want a gate that was gonna be Quincy, that would eventually break, I guess, is what I'm saying. Like, I just don't, I don't wanna spend our money on something that's not gonna be here for a long term, so if we need to, you know.
You could put up.
We could, yeah, put up a temporary fence or something like that, I just didn't, I don't know, I just didn't wanna spend extra money on something that might not work.
I've seen some fields where they, they have like, they bring the outfield in on a temporary fence for littler.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I was thinking, if we could, if we did something like one of those temporary fences or something.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions for Becky?
Well, one, this is September of last year bid, and the price of steel on it, and everybody knows it's gone up since then. Where's the real price tag at now? I mean, this is what it was back then, so.
Actually, I just got this bid not that long ago. So I wonder if he just didn't like update the date, um, because I got the bid, probably like a month or a month ago, or so, yeah. So, um, this is actually a pretty recent bid. I think he just, I, what happened was is I think he gave me a bid originally, and then I had him updated, and I think he just didn't update the dates.
And the second thing is, we only put twenty thousand in to the budget, so it's, this already exceeds that.
The other, the other part of that, though, could be that we put twenty-five thousand dollars for the pool and pickleball, and we didn't use that, so we could use that.
I'm wondering, understanding you have used some of that, I'd be curious how much.
Not very much, at all. The twenty, the twenty-five thousand was for pickleball, and they didn't even do that. We just did the lines on the thing, so that's all they really used.
There.
Yeah, so that's all they used.
Where did the, that pool vacuum come from? Is it that?
That was out of the pool.
Okay.
It would've came out of there, yeah. Plus, there's about forty-two hundred on that.
But that wasn't out of that.
I think it, who?
Was it?
It would've came out.
I mean, it could.
It could be, yeah.
We're still within the budget.
Yeah, well.
I wonder where there's still fifteen thousand left, or twelve thousand.
I will say that we're hoping that if, if we could get the full amount of the twenty-one four fifty, like, Algo Eagle Rec is still going to probably put some money into this as well, because we want, um, you know, we want maybe a new bench in that dugout. We were thinking about possibly looking into getting pricing on concrete on the floors of the dugouts. Um, you know, we want, we want this to be a lot nicer than what it is. And so it's been a really big, um, we really wanna focus on the pool field this year, just to make it, that's where all of our girls play, most of them, and it's just not fair.
Does anybody have any other questions? All right.
Yeah, but this is a dent because of all the, yeah, so that, that's what I was just wanting to point out.
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the Algo Eagle Rec bid for twenty-one thousand four fifty to put an outfield fence, a dugout fence with a metal roof at the pool field.
Do we need to specify all the money's out of room?
We budgeted twenty thousand, and the rest will come out of the pool budget.
Yeah, I'll wait for a second, I got a couple things to add.
I'll second.
Uh, a couple quick things. One, I think that if you had one to clarify, we're gonna need to key it out, we're gonna just key it over to the regular part. And the second one was, Becky and I had spoke, if we're gonna do this, the intent would be to write checks to the Eagle Rec for twenty-one four fifty, because the job mightn't be done in the next.
Oh, yeah.
That was, that was what I was gonna ask, because Tom likes.
Um, yeah, I did talk to him about Tom Link, too. Um, he said, this is a perfect time for him, once, obviously, this, but he said this is more of a fall, he'll probably get it done in the next couple of months, but I was pretty adamant, I need it done before.
Just be sure that the money's out later into the next season.
I personally think since we budgeted twenty thousand, still have more than enough left to cover the fourteen fifty, and the other amount we set aside.
Should we take it out of the regular?
That's what I would do, do either one. Because I would just say, you know, for something else. That's my opinion.
I agree. Motion second?
All right, I'm second.
Yep.
Okay, all right, any more conversation, discussion? All right, Nick?
Voting in motion second to approve the estimate from Nebraska Curb and Bents LLC on behalf of the Eagle Rec for updates, the municipal park ball field, the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Voting James?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Motion Gary?
Thank you, Becky. All right, that takes aside number eight. Approve terms and conditions for professional consulting services with SCS engineers as part of the NET waste diversion recycling grant in the amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars.
We have invited Willitt here tonight, because she knows a lot more than I do about this. Um, they'll be able to fill questions better than I would as well. So if they have any questions after they've looked this over, um, more than likely, it would be further to Willitt. She makes a lot part of the original NET grant for recycling, and I can't remember, we budgeted a hundred twenty thousand, and then Willitt.
I have two more.
So just explain to us in length, what this covers.
So we asked, um, for estimates from three different professional nursing contractors to create a solid waste management plan for the village of Eagle, similar to what Barbara has done historically for our, our water, and for our wastewater to project out our needs, our use, same thing, it's gonna be similar to what they're doing for waste, how much we produce, uh, the charges that we've had for customers over the last five years, and then how many individuals in the Village of Eagle, but then also within a one, three, five, and ten-mile radius outside of us, and project in the next twenty-five years, what that population increase is gonna do here for waste and waste management. And then identify how much could be diverted for recycling for that also. We asked the engineers to provide a utility evaluation, so they would look in our municipal rules and regulations that identify if we should take this on as a service ourselves internally. They'd identify, um, if we need any additional staff to be able to do that, or if we could maintain with what we have. Um, you know, identifying, we might be able to do a franchised hauling service contract. Um, and then look at what other service providers are doing this sort of work within Cass County, knowing that we kind of have a boundary of Cass County, whether haulers are here or around Cass County. So really, that research and identification. Another part of this proposal is that they are going to draft an RFP for us, so if by the end of all of this, you've had meetings with them, you understand, uh, maybe a direction that you may wanna move into the future, if that direction may be a franchised service for this community, uh, operating curbside recycling and offering curbside waste, we wanted to get bids on it for the residents here in Eagle, then, um, you would have that RFP already drafted at your fingertips to move forward, so that we wouldn't have to do any of the drafting or writing that RFP yourselves. You don't have to move forward on it, it's just a service that they would provide for us to be able to have. They'll do stakeholder engagement with the Village of Eagle staff quarterly. They'll meet with the village board twice, uh, and then have two public community meetings to ask, answer questions about future concepts of waste, see what the village, uh, community members may want associated to waste, waste hauling, recycling. All with the intent to get us out of having the bin that we have in front of the village office. So that wouldn't be essentially on our fleet into the future for cost or cost expenditures. It would also leave other counties, or other cities, villages, within our county to have a replicatable, um, service that they could implement, so that way we aren't paying for other individuals recycling. It's nice right now that county commissioners give us fifteen hundred dollars in order to do that. That's not an appropriate price for what we need to be able to service recycling for other members outside of our community. Um, so that is what's happening, is what happened. And then they'll be, they'll give us a final report. The other piece of this that, um, will be mentioned to, um, the engineering company, and it's why we included this radius of one, three, five, and ten miles, just because if you're trying to get a, um, hauler to provide service to your community, it would be important for them to understand how many other households within this radius center they could, um, get subscriptions to, to make that haul their milk run of picking up waste more efficient for them. If we look at, um, SID that we're gonna have up here, we're gonna wanna make sure that they're having waste haul also, it would be nice for them to enter into an agreement, so that way those new concrete roads that they put in don't have more traffic speeding at us, and they keep, like, garbage trucks going down that road, picking up. So it could just bring elements of this. We had, um, two people write back, HDR engineers, SDF engineers. Uh, SDF, um, has worked, and in their proposal, worked with communities close to us here. HDR, um, provided examples that were much, much higher budget and weren't necessarily in or around our community, which is, uh, hard to relate the couple of. So, uh, we double-checked with, uh, NET on a couple things that's probably pertinent for you to know. Number one is when we get invoices monthly, we ask NET if we could, um, get a reimbursement for the bill on a monthly basis. We can do that, they can do, um, once a month reimbursements, then we'll have a quarterly report. So for example, if we're getting monthly invoices from the engineer, we would pay that and then request monthly that reimbursement from Nebraska Environmental Trust. Then we would submit our quarterly report, the progress and what's going on, to the Nebraska Environmental Trust, just so we maintain in good faith data of what's going on within that grant. just so we maintain in good faith data of what's going on within that grant. Nick and I also have a meeting later this month to discuss how we wanna start getting reimbursed for the hauling contract that's currently online and or has been active, and when we want to start drawing down money to replenish our bank, because we do have money in this grant, twenty-six thousand dollars to get our budget back. So we can start that as early as April, we can draw down those funds at any point.
So what's the whole, the total of the whole grant?
The total of the entire grant is a hundred fifty-one thousand dollars.
So twenty-six, a hundred is for the engineers and twenty-six is for reversing our budget, what's the rest for?
Uh, we had budgeted a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the engineers. So we also put in three thousand dollars for flyers of public education, in case we need that when the new sort of nation performs. And we put in four thousand five hundred dollars for a community survey grant job, in case we want to do surveys from the public. The engineering company will also be able to help with those costs. But anytime you're writing a grant, you might as well have some question there.
What timeframe is this?
Yeah, so in our project spending plan, the proposal was to start expending dollars on this grant for engineering in August. So the hope would be that we would be pretty far along with the research within a year's time. The grant is a two-year grant period, technically it was awarded in April, but started in July first, it might be June first. So we would have two years to complete the grant, I would like to get it well on the way before that, just so we can claim those funds. You don't have to extend that grant out for two years, it just gave us leverage to try not to have to write a grant every single year for those costs associated to the recycling. There are N B E E grant funds that are going to open up here shortly, if there's anything else that we feel like we need to have accounted for to get us through, we could certainly write another grant for N B E E.
No matter what, none of this is gonna come out of our pocket, it's just grant money that's gonna pay for this.
They'll come out of our pocket, but we're reimbursed.
For sure, it's guaranteed reverse. Sorry, guaranteed.
We have an agreement with N E T, if we look like that or cash.
No, as we can get it back, but by the time we, if they actually cash the check, we'll probably have a reimbursement. I'm gonna consider to do that electronically.
Yeah, it's the eighth stage.
Very often times we have their reimbursement before they cash the check, so. Nope, no worries there, that was a lot of this monthly and quarterly. I guess we would have to maybe arrange something differently with the engineer.
And they just come up with suggestions for us, we're not bound by anything to take them or?
No, I mean, we're not bound by anything. There, there, what we're trying to do is at least give you an informed packet so you can make executive decisions about what you wanna do for the community. Knowing that this isn't going to survive, you know, forever, and curbside recycling is an option. Franchise systems exist in Cap County, so Leaking Water has one. Lewisville has a franchise system for waste and recycling, the deploying dedication thirteen dollars a month.
Wait, I don't know how they hold that up.
Both then, it's incredible. But you know, the clean sanitation is all the way down, like, so they have a big swath. You mentioned last time, Dan, you have waste collection, quick fill, soil drainage, green sanitation, they're all around here. And I think they've been willing to look at what a franchise system cost would be, and if anything, you don't have to change the system, but you know what as a resident you would get for the cost for having recycling. And hopefully, the idea with the cost would be comparable for the last, it would be okay.
So if you have any questions, we will.
If we continue as we are right now, I mean, they showed the city of Lincoln, they're gonna consolidate their drop sites down to five from the current nineteen. Like, does it impact us in any way, if those doctors remain out there?
It's already been consolidated, it's not so very much here.
Okay.
Um, I don't think so. I'm sorry, is it impacting you? Here's the end of the waste, they're going to Lincoln, they're dropping the, mostly Alvo, Alvo, Douglas. I like to be able to get credit of county commissioners, I tried to contact Andrew DeGarmo a couple times, just to talk to him about, you know, under one, giving the village people more money to give the business service to move waste into a reuse format instead of being here as a landfill, which ultimately is going to get filled up at some point in time. And recycling has a better economic value for Nebraska. I have not been able to be in touch with them when I have a morning that I can get to a Cap County commissioners meeting, and you intend to. I think it's important for them to see what is happening, what game is on in small towns to make sure it's more efficient and if the waste may have been affected, but every small town is gonna have an option. They're gonna get both, I gotta build a new one somewhere, landfill.
Is this something that we have to make a decision on tonight?
For the agreement for S D S, I don't think so, I think sooner the better though. I mean, I'd like to get this project underway with any grant, you wanna make sure you're continuing to move forward on it. The terms and conditions, but this will have been reviewed by morning, um, so. Is there a question?
No, I just want that.
That's what I would say too, I'd say if you're in support of it, do the same as possible. Tonight, if I know the other, the next meeting, if you're not comfortable tonight, if you're gonna do it.
They're, all the engineers, companies that work in this industry are also very busy because they have a lot of funding that came down through the Infrastructure Reduction Act when it was talking on solid waste, solid waste action infrastructure. And then, of course, a lot of landfill gas infrastructure, composting facilities, across the United States, these companies are taxed on their labor and staffing, so anytime we have an opportunity to get in there, if you have a relationship with them, I've worked with them on other projects with my own personal job, it is something that I prefer to get ahead of, but I don't think mine, so we continue to flag them saying, we are important to the community. These days, I should sort of step up on the back of it.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So the village gets reimbursed, you say it's guaranteed contract. My question is, what if their funding is cut at some point in the project? Or do they have guaranteed funds?
Uh, so the Nebraska legislature did try to take a portion of their money, have given majority of the time, anything that is an active contract, um, they have money for it. It's future grant funds that they would release, is where that money gets pitched from, when the money's projected.
So they would have this money banked for us and other projects that have already been approved?
It's guaranteed. Their board also has to review these grants, so it's a formal process, the governor's one has picked board members, and I think before that, Brigg has picked board members that are still to stay on there, that then has to review these grants and approve the budget.
I have a guarantee, no motion, no proof.
What was that, Marcus?
A motion to approve.
One second.
Any more questions to discuss, any more questions or discussion?
Okay, well, I feel like I'm John over here.
Alright, Nick?
Uh, the motion second, we're gonna vote to approve the terms and conditions for professional consulting services with S C S engineers as part of the N E T Waste Diversion Recycling Grant in the amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Voting on that, John?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion Terry?
Thanks for all the hard work, Willet.
Yes.
You're appreciated.
Thank you, Willet.
Thank you.
Alright, that takes us to item number nine, approved culvert agreement between Tim Masek and the Village of the Eagle at eight forty South Third Street.
Terry and the Public Works guys went, took a peek at this. Oh, long story short, work had began without proper permitting. So we put a stop order on the project and went out with that, kind of saw what we needed to do. I think we're gonna do twelve inch, and I didn't remember back from Bryce, whether he found like a reducer, eighteen to twelve, but anyways, we're looking at doing a twelve inch, five inches under the highway. Yeah, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, you need to turn it off if the water flows, so. Anything else on that, Terry?
It's pretty high for, uh, our side of the district.
The past is property?
Past is property.
Well, I would say, I would say the best. I would say the best, we're in the agreement. And we're supposed to get a price, once we get an equity, was that roughly, do you remember?
Well. Forty-two.
Okay, a little longer.
It's a total amount, it's already got two hundred fifty-four.
Yep, that's, yeah, that's, that would be my interpretation of it, so. Is there anybody with a chance, put a transit on, the stuff that he's already got, to make sure it flows the right way? We haven't, we haven't, yeah.
If not, it'll have to be dug out, repositioned, it looks fairly good, but, yep.
What about the dirt, uh, foot, time, house, some of those properties, has that?
Yeah, we, we mentioned that, I don't think he's, probably quite an answer, but yeah, I guess worst case scenario, we'll take it, put it in our yard.
Or you would move, go part of, part of, cut out of the existing ditch and spare even some state property.
Yeah. Was it just extra dirt that you had that you didn't use, or was it stuff you dug out, where did it come from?
We dug it out.
We dug it out. As well make sure that's dealt with, somewhere, you know, properly.
And then a sign got removed too, amongst all this, so we'll get that sign back up, it's a no parking sign. Otherwise, he has standard language.
I'm watching, go through.
Culvert agreement.
Exactly who's paying for the extra part of the culvert thing and the adjacent block?
Uh, we have encroached on the property to the north, which I think we do, that'll be part of the same project, so you're gonna have to put that.
No, but it doesn't say that in here.
We can tweak that a little bit.
I think it hates me, not just maybe, it's.
Yeah, we can tweak that.
Says his property and ongoing, and that's fine, but what about the rest?
Yeah, how many people is just that space, do you remember, like, ten feet or more?
Yeah, it was more than, quick finish, we just have to buy a twenty-foot culvert piece, three hundred and fifty is the stuff dollars. You follow the, 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 whatever you have it.
We'll, we'll add something in there, John, if you wanna do, add amended on that. I'll get the, I'll get the measurement and add that piece in.
Well, I don't know exactly what I'm amending for sure, it's.
I would just say.
Basically saying that he'll pay for all material for the entire project.
That's a good way to word it, thank you.
One second. Any more discussion? Nick?
Uh, voting on the motion second, approved the culvert agreement between Tim Masek and the Village of Eagle at eight forty South Third Street, and that includes, um, the property owner being responsible for all costs associated with the project. Uh, voting on that, Dan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion Terry?
Alright, that takes us to item number ten, approval of Public Works employees attending a grade-two wastewater training course and examination in Lincoln from August twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, twenty-two-five at a cost of five fifty per person.
Well, they found a class, the state, so both of our guys going, uh, you know, but originally we, we didn't have them to go, and I had talked to Bryce, he'd also be willing to give it a shot again as well. They both liked to go ultimately.
Alright, it's probably a good thing. Cause you said they take the class at the end.
Yeah, the class, I think it's like three days or two, or three days long, and the test is the following, the following day, on the fourth day, so it's like three, three and a half days essentially.
Are you, Terry, are you okay with that?
Yeah, it'll work. I have to go, just check, so, some things like that.
Sounds good to me.
So we gotta be gone on the twenty-fifth, right? Yep, but you can be Monday, whatever, we need to post it, and then we'll be shipping.
We could both make the chip on Thursday, that week.
Just Terry now, fire for chip or two.
There you go.
I wouldn't worry about it, it's, if we feel like doing it, we'll do it, it'll be something.
Alright, I make a motion that we approve the employees attending a grade-two wastewater training course and examination in Lincoln from August twenty-fifth to twenty-eighth at a cost of five fifty per person.
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
How many times have we done this with Bryce?
This is just.
Just the second one, right?
Yes.
That's what I was thinking, the second.
Historically, we've always, you know, allowed up to two, and then further testing, it's kind of on the employee's dime until they get it passed, and they can ask for reimbursement on that success motivation.
That's kind of what I was gonna.
Advice.
Right, Nick?
Voting on that motion second to approve both the Public Works employees, Adam and Bryce, attending grade-two wastewater training class and the examination in Lincoln from August twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth, at a cost of five fifty per person. Voting, Marcus?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
John?
We threw our own question answer, though, yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
My question being, is separate registration for the certificate, has that been arranged that way? So wait, looks just fine for the class, doesn't it, time to get it out?
Right, yeah, they'll have to also apply separately for the exam.
I just want to make sure that's not dropped.
Right, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, that takes us to item number eleven, report on streets and maintenance. Um, have we addressed, have we addressed my neighbor's driveway yet?
It was looked at and, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't, Terry and I looked at it, did maintenance actually look at it, I don't know.
Cause they just piled blacktop right there, and it kind of causes a dam, and the water just pools right there, sits there.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know why that, but it's there, obviously it built something at some point.
The button's too high or something?
And it actually pools in front of Earl and's driveway too, so it kind of needs to be fixed, right?
You'd almost have to have some kind of machine, which, what do you call it?
You can play, you know, we can, we can, but it can be ground down, placed down, uh, I, I, I don't know what it's hiding, you know, I, I don't know if it's.
What's on there?
I thought you knew everything.
I don't know if it was dug out, built in, that whole, that whole drain in there is not quite right. Uh, yeah, we looked at it.
Make sure no valve box hidden underneath it.
Yeah, who knows?
Uh.
Mosquitoes are horrible.
We, we looked at it a month or six weeks ago, but. I guess I would say the problem is there's no easy fix, we can get a planter, grinder, and grind it down, but I don't know if we're creating another problem.
How big of a area is it?
A lot of neighbors in town, do they have one?
Their driveway and then their neighbor's stewards are today, so.
Yeah, they don't come to see us, they don't come to us.
I mean, it's about the top.
Why are you saying a lot of neighbors in town, they're going to write your stuff?
Once.
Yep.
If they have neighbors, look at them, they come to town, is that right?
Let's see if they give us that suggestion, it'd be pretty simple for them.
Yeah, if they, if they have a planter or grinder, they need to do that on First Street too.
Cause I don't think you want us doing that.
You can have it. Okay.
Wasn't it, we, we, then water in your place?
Yeah, and I looked at it, uh.
I don't want it like that.
It, it's, it's a hump, which prevents water getting down.
Yeah, but it's actually too low and on the other side of it too, so. But, okay, if we can have neighbors look at it, that would be awesome. I have to tell my neighbors something.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be.
Be older.
I just talked to him the other day, but, yeah. I'll have to look at First Street too, Terry says there was an issue with it too, like a big.
The trail is, is a speed bump.
Yeah, it's a speed bump.
Everybody coming into town, planes, plus I don't like it.
Anything else on streets and maintenance, Terry?
Uh, they're supposedly finishing up on the fire hydrant flushing here. Usually it's always been done by the end of the month, that's what I told them, I think they're a half, two thirds of the way through. Uh, they also have to do crosswalk and parking stall painting, uh, I told them they had to at least be started on yet, next week.
Can we do the crosswalk right by the park this time?
Well, it's kind of goofy because it's at least nowhere.
They did it on the wrong side.
Right, there's still sidewalk on either side, right?
Right, well, there is a little bit on the one side, but they put the crosswalk on the other side.
So the crosswalk will lead them on and then it switches this, yeah.
You should go look at it.
Well, I, I've seen, I've, I've just, there is no right way. I, we, we do whatever you want.
Well, two sides don't make sense to me.
Thinking of fire hydrants, I know we budgeted some, we got many orders, we need, we've got several in town, we need, it's on their list to get bids.
It's on their list.
I'm just saying, we should probably get a couple bots, we have them. Yeah, I've spoken to, uh.
Before.
I'd spoken, that's what I'm saying, we'd talked about which ones to get pricing, um, passed that along, and I just haven't seen any back yet, to get moving on that.
Another thing, um, exercising the valves. What was it, a couple years ago, the rural water was supposed to come out, they didn't?
They, they did.
They did?
Three, four, four years ago, and they did all the valves, Eric, they're, there's. The maintenance department was supposed to light it up last year, nothing ever happened, and it's, it's all this for them to do this year, and thus far, nothing's happened.
Marcus, you're probably familiar with these, being in the industry, but the hydrant buddies, they're expensive, they're about four or five thousand dollars, but then our guys wouldn't have to do it all, they actually, they connect to Milwaukee.
Okay, I guess.
And they exercise the valve.
Yeah.
You know, we used to have a machine that didn't.
We did. But this is a lot, this is a lot handier.
Yeah.
Something like that.
About five thousand, but some of the guys have asked me to put on the budget workshop list, so.
If they'll actually, if they'll use it.
Yeah.
I would.
That's what I'm saying, I just don't want to buy the machine that rocks it off in five years, they're nice, you just gotta be careful, so you don't over tighten or something, you know? Yeah, be careful, still, still looking pretty good.
It, it's actually better to have rural water.
Oh, yeah.
Do it, it's faster than these, Eric, but the thing is, you've got to give them the courage to actually stay on their butt. To have them pick a date, to have them select a date that they'll come and do it, cause I think it's just two days.
Yeah.
By the sudden, when.
They're busy, yeah, for sure.
Right, they, it's, it's a two day project.
It used to be ten dollars, twenty, ten or twenty dollars a valve, so it was, it was about a thousand dollars last time.
It's now a lot cheaper than buying, but that's.
Well, it is, but if you can get them in, it's timely, the other benefit for the hydrant buddy we spoke of, it's just for water main breaks, they'll have to.
Have it.
Yeah, it's easier, faster.
But, but, this, this is a reason we have human resources, they need to encourage some of these projects.
You give me a list and we'll encourage it.
Scene number one.
I have another question, I thought that we approved a bid, um, a while ago to fix the, on Eagle Drive, the sidewalk, or is that still not fixed?
We did, we approved that in April, and it's been some back and forth, the gentleman had a health condition occur, and then had some other issues, but the equipment is.
The equipment is in the office, in loader, trackhoe, the dump truck.
The plan is start tomorrow.
That's the plan, and we actually signed today, so.
He's here. Yes, these guys have been impatiently waiting for the customers to directly back, so.
We'll see what quality of equipment he does, so determine whether he comes back or he doesn't.
And obviously, we're talking about how busy the guys are, but there's a big tree branch in that abandoned house, so.
Yeah, that's been there a while too, and I think we've mentioned that. That's probably on the list.
Does he do just mainly sidewalk?
Uh, he's also gonna do Fourth Street.
Sidewalk and the driveway, it's not our driveway.
I just.
Two sidewalks, a driveway in the street.
Willing to do the sidewalk down the park up to the, uh, hall or to the. Bike path, we talked about years finishing that little stretch, I'll just.
I mean, I could get a price, we could get a price.
I'm, yeah, we, we talked and talked and talked about it, and then we got anything, so I would just like to see, uh.
I'll write that down, get a price on.
If he, if he would be willing. Yeah, so that's.
To the moat back?
Yeah.
Yeah. I will ask him to get us a number on that. Cause we have a budgeting, idea for the budgets, okay?
Anything else on streets and maintenance?
I wouldn't want to put that, hydro buddy thing on.
I think we'll put it on the workshop, and then if you guys shoot it down, shoot it down, if you want, great.
Somewhere we can talk about the other guys, talk to them, see if they're actually gonna be willing to use it. I like putting the liability on rural water.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna use it, if you get it.
Can you have a good, so we know for sure that's what it costs?
Yeah, it's like, it's like, yeah, I'll get, I'll get the vision, when it's, it's, I think it's just over five thousand, they're, they're not cheap, but, all excavators and that, swear by them, so.
They really should be ex, all of those should be exercised every year, so I mean, five years it would pay for itself if they, if they would actually do it. It is nice putting liability on rural water, if they were to break something, but our guys should be able to do it.
And I think rural water signs off on that liability.
Well, they do, so it's gonna be on us either way, so yeah, our guys should just.
Well, they should.
Do it.
Pretty. Well, first.
Yeah.
Looks like the Milwaukee one's fifty three, sixty three.
Yeah, they keep going up, they're pretty sweet though.
A little over five thousand, or five years it would pay for, the sixth year it would be saving us money.
I might be turning a bunch of valves by hand, but it's takes, it's a workout.
Saves you money, let's say break a couple.
Yeah. Then we're gonna have to hide it.
Just like everyone's, last star being great, it got real expensive.
Back in the day, they used to open the fire hydrants and let kids run when we first lived there.
Did they break something on that one?
We're here.
Terry, did they break something on that one?
Can we have to know if there's any updates to getting water to that new development, I would ask?
Actually, I just saw an email today, there's some back and forth between the state of Nebraska, N D E, and Lamprey and Earsin Engineering. They're hung up on the pump, uh, booster pump, booster station. Um, it's gotta meet X, Y, Z, or whatever, the problem is, is they didn't get permission or construction plans of the state ahead of time. So I think the state's making them jump through some extra hoops.
That's why they should, they couldn't have.
Well, then they have no idea when they're gonna move forward yet.
Not quite yet, but we're gonna, uh, Terry and I just internally have been talking, and when it gets to that point, we're gonna ask, that obviously the water will be, they claim it'd be fine, but we don't want that stagnant water, we're gonna want them to flush that out, retest it, everything again, before we connect to our.
Yeah, for sure, definitely.
Seven or two months now.
Yeah.
We're beginning with our hydrant by the, uh, garden, I mean, the garden, it's, he is gone.
Yeah, I cut the line down below and there's nothing.
It's down there?
Nothing, I stuck a piece of trace wire in the line, it goes south for about nine and a half feet, and then it just stops, hits something, and.
Also, it's.
Yeah, I don't know if it's.
I'll just, just curious where we're at, what you found.
Yeah, I was, had my fingers crossed, I was gonna find water down there and just needed to replace the hydrant, but there was nothing, no water coming to it, so.
Oh, at least we know.
Yep.
All right. We'll kind of move to number twelve, report on wells and sewers, is there anything else?
Boiling out sludge, I think it's today, they had two loads, they had two loads, basically, they've fallen out four loads of sludge. I haven't been down there for over a month, so I'm not sure how things look, uh, water, wells are doing fine, since we had a little rain, daily pumping, stuff, it's bad.
Even over the, uh, weekend, and I averaged like a hundred and forty seven thousand, so it's pretty, it's pretty low for this time of year.
We did have a couple people did experience a three hundred dollar water bill though, because they didn't realize that they were needed to the home, and they didn't realize that they had it on their, their sprinklers, otherwise they had, it's still fairly high bill.
I would say that's been a pretty good deterrent, all in all, though.
Yeah, it's the best deterrent you have, is the price structure of your water use. If you want to pay it, fantastic, if you don't want to pay it, then cut that.
A lot of people.
There's no, no reason that you have to put sixty thousand gallon off a little log of grass.
Even when we forget to turn ours off at night, we don't use that.
All right.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's, uh, their, their major project right now is to finish flushing to get the crosswalks painted and stuff before school starts, cause that's three weeks away, and, uh, yeah, they ought to be doing valve exercises, they've got, they've got, you know, truck box still is not on the credit line, or, you know, I can name thirty projects that they can be doing.
Well, at least they're not out of projects.
No.
I just would like somebody to review where they put the crosswalk, so they know, right, so they do make sense.
Yeah, they, they could cut the other one, they could draw the other one in, or whatever, but I don't know how, would you be okay with the others still being there until it wears off naturally, or would you want them to try to find something to take it off with?
I don't know.
I don't think it's all Nazi down there in the last.
It just doesn't make sense to have it on that side, there's no side.
I don't know, not in the woods.
It, it could have been gone.
Yeah.
Year or two, or just where it's salt and sandy, yeah.
And if you put it on the other side, it'd be very, very nice.
I was joking, both being there temporarily, so that one wears off, you might be able to burn it off. Yeah, maybe.
I just, if it's not aware of.
It'd be fine, but just don't put it there again.
I'll let you remind us about that, I won't forget.
And there, there was someplace else around the part two that didn't make sense, but I can't remember if it was the other intersection or not. I'll have to look. All right, that takes aside item number thirteen, approve the diamond and test type for the previous meeting.
I'm going to approve minutes as typed.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to approve the minutes, uh, James?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
That takes aside number fourteen, is there any report from communities and boards?
I got a couple things, but I'll let anybody else go first, if I have something. A couple of quick things, budget workshops are right around the corner, I know I, I asked fire and rescue and some of the other committees to, I'll just tell you guys while you're here, if you're on the street committee, for instance, I'm gonna use that as an example, all the names and Dan, we already got some pretty big, heavy projects scheduled for that, the, the one here planned, but if there's anything you want to budget in particular for streets, just try to let me know by like August first, I'm talking big expenditures, capital, like, like expenditures, same for water, whoever's on sewer, et cetera, et cetera, um, that way we can get a, a pretty good list over to Lisa beforehand, um, with the August calendar around, but anyways, uh, don't. Little problem, the meeting, the budget workshop meeting will likely be the last week in August, maybe the second to last. The county is allowed till August twentieth to get us the property tax evaluations, and that's really what stands this whole thing, so you're kind of stuck, absolutely. Um, so just start, you know, talk amongst your committees if you have anything, otherwise, I generally try to take notes throughout the year of, um, things we've mentioned, things we might be interested in, things that we carry over, um, et cetera. Secondly, uh, keynote, um, a couple comments on keynote, we currently are with Big Red Keynote, um, I've been talking to Ty MacIntosh, Bailey's local. He is interested in moving to Daily Double Keynote, which originates in Denton, if you're familiar with the, that keynote operation. They're not as big as Big Red Keynote, they don't have all these, and I can't explain, I'm not a keynote player, I can't, you know, explain it all to you. But the things that would stand out the most to us is we would make more money, get a larger percentage with Daily Double. Big Red, one of the reasons they don't make quite as much as they handle a lot of the day to day stuff, or quarterly type reports, things that are required, this would go back to the municipal office, which is fine, I did that for years before Big Red, um, took us over. I just wanted to make that aware, I don't know if there's a couple of board members that wanna, we have a keynote committee, but it's been kind of defunct for the last several years, cause there really hasn't been anything going on. So if there's a couple of board members that'd be interested in meeting with, Ty, myself.
You can explain it to.
Yeah, Daily Double guy.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I can't remember his name, Scott, we need these guys, so if there's a couple of you that would like to do that, we can set up a little meeting and.
I would like to do it.
Yeah.
And if you could give us data on Big Red Keynote so far.
Yes.
What kind of contract do we have with Big Red for?
Um, so, I think it's good until sometime next year, however, this is something we're interested in, it only requires like a sixty day notice to terminate it and switch over, and I don't know how long they need to sort of, the game's over, I'm gonna have to ask those questions, but.
Nobody else wants to do it, I'll do it.
Wanna sit in on that? Good.
All right, anything else?
Well, EFJ is gonna be having a meeting pretty soon, just trying to get a meeting schedule.
All right, meeting adjourned eight twenty four. All right, we need adjourned eight twenty four.